Gray.
Yes.
Jerem. Melton.
Here.
Pauls. Thompson.
Here.
Gurnat. Mr. President.
Please rise for the Pinnacle Legends Communication.
The allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward with the beginning of the school year starting this week for many, many kids in our community, please bless the youth of our community, help them become successful adults and the future leaders of our community, and also bless them and keep them safe and healthy throughout this school year.
Vice publication on Daily Record, the official newspaper on August 9th, North Republic Council, regular city council meeting August 13th, 2013. A current copy of the Means Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions may only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Okay, 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 that's fine. Zoning ordinance on final ring plan board attachments will take items five, six, seven, and eight as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone, ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district to incorporate in that district the property located at 7100 West Center Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution at the preliminary plot entitled Mid-America Plaza Replat One is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is the replat transmitted here with entitled Mid-America Plaza Replat One is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And eight is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on items number five, six, seven, and eight are today. Are there any proponents who want to speak today?
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Most of them approved.
Roll call. Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yeah.
Gurnat. Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all past seven to zero. We'll take items nine and 10 as one case. Nine is ordinance to rezone property located generally southwest of 192nd Street and Western Avenue from G O to R 7 medium density multifamily residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Ten is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district, to approve a development plan. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items number nine and 10 are today. Any proponents? Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, simply here to answer any questions that we might have regarding these two items.
Thank you. Other proponents? Any opponents here today? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Thompson. Gurnat. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Resolution to a permanent plats, plats subdivision agreements, item number 11. Resolution to the permanent plat entitled Stevens Center located southwest in the 27th and Q Street is hereby accepted. The preparation final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 11 is today. Proponents?
Doug Kellner, Thompson, Greece, and Doerner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. If you have any questions, if you have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuit to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 12 through 17 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuit to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 18 through 24 shall be laid over for two weeks. Pursuit to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 25 through 26 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Liquor, item number 27. Omaha Zoological Society, DBA Henry Dory Zoo, 3701 South 10th Street, request permission for an addition to their present class I and catering liquor license for an area approximately 120 feet by 126 feet by 126 feet known as the infield at the zoo. We have communications opposed.
Public hearing on item number 27 is today. Proponents?
Members of the council, Luke Clinker, Fraser Stryker Law Firm, 409 South 17th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Omaha Zoological Society, just a few brief remarks. I am here today with Mr. Dennis Pate and Mrs. Sue Lyons from the zoo. Mr. Pate is the executive director and CEO. Mrs. Lyons is the director of guest services and manager of the zoo's current liquor license. I've got a few brief introductory remarks. In 2011, the zoo acquired the Rosenblatt Stadium property. In expanding the zoo's footprint with additional parking, the zoo turned part of the original Rosenblatt site into a new feature known as Infield at the Zoo. Infield at the Zoo incorporates several features of old Rosenblatt Stadium, including signage, parts of the dugouts, parts of the seats. Within Infield at the Zoo, the Omaha Zoological Society envisions this space as a spot for private parties, family reunions, weddings, weddings receptions, and that's why the Zoological Society has applied for an addition to its existing license to cover Infield at the Zoo. Now, some important points to note about Infield at the Zoo with respect to the liquor license. There are no concession stand type alcohol sales at Infield at the Zoo to the general public. All groups who utilize the premises at Infield at the Zoo will execute a facility rental agreement that specifies that all alcohol must remain within the confines of the space. Persons attending the event are subject to proof-of-age requirements. There will be a zoo event representative on hand during all events as well as security personnel on hand at all events. And on behalf of the Omaha Zoological Society, we would request respectfully that the council approve the application for addition. Myself, along with Mr. Pate and Mrs. Lyons are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? See none, public hearings closed. Mr. Gurnat.
Mr. Pate? Just your name and zoo address for the record.
Dennis Pate, 3701 South 10th Street, Omaha, 6817.
In the opening remarks, it was stated that it'd always been part of the plan once Infield at the Zoo was opened up. By the way, awesome place. You preserve the memory. You hit it right on the, on the head.
Thank you.
It was always part of the vision, once Infield at the Zoo was open to the general public, to use that space as another avenue to bring folks to the zoo and expand its usage for private events. That was always the plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's, it's, nothing new that you just saw an opportunity maybe to increase the bottom line or be anything like of a negative side by the spur of the moment. This was, this was from the get-go?
From the get-go. The planning that took place and the construction was all pointed toward having it finished up before College World Series so that when people came to see it, we'd be able to talk about other uses at the same time.
Okay. Security will be the same as if the event was inside the main gate somewhere else in the, in the zoo. The, you'll have staff onboard. What about outdoor music? Is that going to be?
There could be outdoor music. There's none built in to the design, so that would have to be added on. Again, we have a zoo event host. That's usually one of the curators or one of the other staff that works extra, that monitors all of that to make sure that the event goes on as planned. It doesn't exceed sound limits. Party doesn't get out of hand. They are there to answer questions, and we have security around the clock every day of the year. So we've got both ends kind of covered.
One of the opponents had asked if I could ask this question. How much thought on, once this was put into the plan originally to utilize this as another venue for, for the zoo, how much thought was put into it in regards to the peripheral where you have residential, a mixed use on the west, residential on the south, well, and basically you got the interstate on the north? How much thought was really put into it as far as the neighbor involvement?
I think we felt pretty good based, did we consult with neighbors? We did not. But based on our long history with having events at the zoo, we've had 21 years worth of events where we've had a liquor license at the zoo without any problems whatsoever in the course of 21 years. We just saw it as a very natural extension of what we had done before. What we added in was just some power if we needed it. We put some fencing around it, in part because if kids were playing catch, we didn't, if the ball got away from them, we didn't want them running out into parked cars or into traffic. So we put fence around it really for that reason. But other than that, we expect 95% of the use is going to be more of a community use, and it was designed for that purpose with a little concession to what if USC wants to come and they want to have an alumni group there during College World Series. We did make some allowance for that in terms of power and that sort of thing. But really, 95% of the design was guided by community use.
And then finally, I understand that the outfield restrooms that were at the old Rosenblatt Stadium have been saved, and that will provide the restroom facilities for Infield at the Zoo or anybody that needs coming and going into the zoo itself. Is that correct?
Not quite. The, the restrooms are not open to the general public. We don't like their isolated location where we can't monitor them all the time. And so they're more for use for when we do our every other year event, Zufari. It's a fundraiser for the zoo. They'd be used for, staff for that. But if we had an event there, we might well consider just bringing in porta potties. That would be, that would service the, the event.
Okay.
The restrooms in the outfield are a little far away.
They are.
Yeah.
And that facility is a little bit to the north and to the east there, yes.
Yes, yeah.
You said might bring in. Could that possibly be, I mean, if you have an event that has maximum occupancy for Infield at the Zoo, it would just seem the correct thing to do would be right in the, in the lease of that, that they'd have to provide porta potties.
I agree with you.
All right. Can we make that happen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved at seven to zero. Item number 28, Stories Coffee House, 1129 South 180th Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 28 is today. Proponents, please? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray.
Oh, yes, sir, you're, item 28?
I'm, yes, 28.
Uh-huh.
I'm Michael Peterson of 1202 South 180th Plaza. I'm representing myself as well as other residents of Whispering Pines subdivision located in the ridges development bordering along the east of 180th, the south of Shadow Ridge, the west of Shadow Ridge Golf Course, and the north is Pacific Street.
And you're here just for clarification as a opponent?
Opponent.
Okay, thank you.
Our objection to the Class C liquor license for Stories Incorporated is, as we understand it, that if the current business were not to work out, that it could be converted into a bar in the future, and we would have no recourse. We are not trying to be unreasonable, and we understand the desire of Stories to serve wine and coffee liqueur beverages at their establishment. But we believe that a Class I license that would allow them to serve beer, wine, and liquor on premise would be in the best interest of the surrounding, to the residents of the surrounding business, and we would not object to a Class I license. I have other information. I have a petition that we passed around the neighborhood as well as drives if that information would be valuable to the council.
Sure, you can have that, hand that to the clerk if you'd like, and we'll.
Sure.
Put that in the record.
One more.
Thank you. Any other further comments at this time, or?
No further comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are you?
I'm the owner of.
You're the applicant? Okay, yeah, you probably should have spoken when we called for proponents, but we'll give you, we'll give you a chance now?
Okay, I didn't realize that I was considered a proponent.
Okay.
I'm the owner of Stories Coffee House. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, a name and address too?
Melissa Stevens. Do you need my residential address?
Residential or business is fine.
Residential is 15338 Gilder Avenue, Bennington 68007.
Okay. Here to answer questions about, do you have any comments in reflection upon the opposition there?
I'm not sure what the opposition is. This, this location has held a liquor license before. It was a bar before. We do not consider ourselves a bar. We are primarily a coffee house. We sell, I would say, 80% of our revenue is generated through pastries, coffee, and soups and sandwiches. We have a small intention of serving wine and coffee liqueur drinks in the evening. We intend to invite storytellers and violinists and pianists, so it's, it's not, it's not intended to be a rowdy bar environment in any capacity. So I'm not real sure what the objection is from the residents, but we intend to be a, an academic and sophisticated establishment intended to just serve, you know, wine and in a casual environment.
And some off-sale opportunities too, or I think that's what his objection was. Is that something you're planning to do?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, when, when requested.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think public hearings are already closed, but I see Franklin, Mr. Thompson has his light on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, City Legal is.
I'm Mungar here?
He's here.
Am I excused?
Yeah, yeah.
You might want to stay right down here, ma'am. There may be some questions.
Just in case there's some questions.
I'm Mungar, Deputy City Attorney.
Tom, this council can't control whether or not the next applicant is a bar or a coffee house, or, I mean, unless they have a bad record, we can't forecast in the future as to what will and cannot be there, can we?
To a degree you can, because if there is a change of ownership, a complete or primary change of ownership, they would have to come in with a new application and would come in front of you. It's a little bit unusual at that point to discuss with the new owner what type of business they're going to run, because typically they're running the same kind of business as before. But you could do that, and you could, if they were going to run a business that is substantially different than what's there now and is going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, yes, you could at that time turn down the buyers, recommend denial of the buyer's license.
But in this case, the coffee house is actually somewhat of a downgrade from a bar that used to be there, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
So we're not, we're not going into the accelerated position. We're going into a deceleration from my point of view?
From the, from the standpoint of the impact on the neighborhood, probably so.
Okay.
That would be the same inquiry you would make of a new owner. If they came in and said, well, we want to revert back to a bar, you could inquire what the impact of that bar is going to be on the neighborhood, and if you feel it's going to be an adverse impact different than what the coffee house has, you could recommend denial on that basis.
Okay.
If they wanted to, if they wanted to downgrade now to an I and be, still be able to sell some package sales, wine or something else, they would have to come back later on with a new application for a Class D, a package license, and couple the two licenses together. If they downgraded now to an I, that would not allow them to do any off-premises sales.
Okay, thank you. If I could speak to the owner again? Just say your name one more time.
Melissa Stevens.
How often do you see yourself doing off-sale, on-premise sales?
Very infrequent. Truly, the, the largest intention is for us to serve glasses of wine, occasionally bottles of wine to groups, and then coffee liqueur drinks in the evening for primarily.
Okay, so it's mostly a coffee house slash conversational pit, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
And sometimes they'll walk away with bottles of wine?
Occasionally.
Okay. The gentleman from the neighborhood suggested you go to I, Class I license. What do you think about that?
You know, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I don't understand why, why, why he has a concern. You know, if a couple wants to come in and purchase a bottle of wine and leave with it and a cheesecake, I don't see how that's detrimental to the neighborhood or the surrounding areas.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
To my colleagues, I like to, thank you.
You're welcome.
I like to get these things, these signatures, at least three days in advance, and when I get them on the same day of the public hearing, it kind of tells me that they left me out of the loop, although this is really Mr. Paul's district. But, you know, I, I need this information a lot sooner than right now, and coupled with the fact that it doesn't seem like it's going, it's going to be an intrusive establishment, I'll go ahead and stay with my motion.
I'll stay with the second.
There's a motion and a second, and no further lights. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 29, Charleston's 7540 Dodge Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on item number 29 is today. Proponents? Mr. Bachman.
John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. On behalf of Charleston's, I have Vince Fletcher of Charleston's here with me today. Will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. I'll just, go ahead. I'll second the motion to approve, and I'll, I'll note that this is a welcome addition to the Dodge Street corridor there and a very successful restaurant throughout the city that we will enjoy having in this neighborhood as well, and certainly in cooperation with what's going to happen at Crossroads and that redevelopment. I think it's a good fit, so I'm also supportive. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Ms. Fresherson, it's, I'll share this with you because it's a block just away from my district, and it's also my wife's favorite restaurant. This is where we go to do all the lovey-dovey stuff.
Well, share some brown sugar carrots one of these days. That's been my favorite thing, sir.
Yeah, they used to have that apple and, and kind of pastry thing. I wish they'd bring that back, but.
It comes around every once in a while.
My arteries are hurting.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Mrs. Thompson. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 30, Spirit World, 7517 Pacific Street, catering liquor license. It's a new application at an old location. They presently hold a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 30 is today. Any proponents?
Good afternoon, councilmen. I am Lori Wolford. I'm the owner of Spirit World at 7517 Pacific Street, and here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed.
Most of them approved.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 31, Cheeseburgers in Paradise, 17304 Dodge Street, request permission to appoint Michael Higbee manager.
Public hearing on item number 31 is today. Proponents, please?
Hello, my name's Michael Higbee. I'm the general manager of Cheeseburger in Paradise. My address is 17311 Walworth Avenue.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
This is my kid's face.
We've got a motion and a second for the Thompson kids now, all right. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 32, Shelter Belt Theater, 3225 California Street, request permission to appoint Elizabeth Thompson manager.
Public hearing on item number 32 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Bonham, the executive director of the Shelter Belt Theater. On behalf of Elizabeth Thompson, 3225 California Street, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents today? See none, public hearings closed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and before I call for the vote, I'll tell you how much I enjoy your Shelter Skelter shows at Halloween time. You guys do a great job there.
We'll have a good one this year. You'll have to come check it out.
Thanks. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 33, Come and Go, request permission to appoint Eric McDonald, manager of eight different locations, 3352 North 108, 1211 Blondo Street, 720 North 108th Street, 1010 South 154th Street, 1819 North 72nd Street, 8900 Boys Street, 8242 Maple Street, and 14353 Q Street.
Public hearing on item number 33 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Eric McDonald. I'm the district supervisor here in Omaha for Come and Go, 1819 North 72nd Street, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most of them approved.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved at seven to zero. Item number 34, Credit Advisors Foundation, request permission for a special designated license for a reception at the CenturyLink Omaha Parking Lot G with music on August 19th through the 24th. It will be outside, and the music would end at 1:00 PM.
Public hearing on item number 34 today, is today. Proponents? Ms. Homan.
Hi, Sam Homan, CEO of Credit Advisors Foundation. We're here to seek the special designated license, liquor license, and this is in conjunction with Omaha Fashion Week. Producer Nick Hudson and then the liquor manager, Nick Bartholomew. Myself and Mr. Hudson are both members of the board of the, what we call FIG, or, I'm sorry, FIM, Fashion Institute of the Midwest, and so we've partnered on a number of projects together related to financial literacy and counseling of some of the young designers who are, are up and coming, trying to get them on solid footing for budgeting and financial counseling and whatnot, and that's why we're in partnership on this event with some of those proceeds coming back to our foundation to further those educational opportunities for them. Here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak?
Just very quickly, I just wanted to, I would like to let my colleagues know that I'd be supportive of the 1:00, 1:00 time for music. We'll, we'll give it a shot this year. If we hear any complaints, we'll have to revisit it a little bit, but I'm willing to give you a shot at it this year and see how it goes. It sounds like a really marvelous event, and one I hope to at least attend, at least in some fashion, so we're looking forward to it, but I would be supportive of it. Motion approved.
And if you can get Mr. Gray to model at one of your events, I'll attend as well. It is a great event for Omaha, I appreciate it too.
My wife wouldn't allow it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number 33, Come and Go, request permission to appoint Eric McDonald, manager of eight different locations, 3352 North 108, 12011 Blondo Street, 720 North 108th Street, 1010 South 154th Street, 1819 North 72nd Street, 8900 Boyd Street, 8242 Maple Street, and 14353 Q Street.
Public hearing on item number 33 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon, my name's Eric McDonald. I'm the district supervisor here in Omaha for Come and Go, 1819 North 72nd Street, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Most approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved seven to zero. Item number 34, Credit Advisors Foundation, request permission for a special designated license for a reception at the CenturyLink Omaha Parking Lot G with music on August 19th through the 24th. It will be outside, and the music would end at 1:00 P.M.
Public hearing on item number 34 today, is today. Proponents, Ms. Homan?
Hi, Sam Homan, CEO of Credit Advisors Foundation. We're here to seek the special designated license, liquor license, and this is in conjunction with Omaha Fashion Week. Producer Nick Hudson and then the liquor manager, Nick Bartholomew. Myself and Mr. Hudson are both members of the Board of the, what we call FIG, or, I'm sorry, FIM, Fashion Institute of the Midwest. And so we've partnered on a number of projects together related to financial literacy and counseling of some of the young designers who are up and coming, trying to get them on solid footing for budgeting and financial counseling and whatnot, and that's why we're in partnership on this event with some of those proceeds coming back to our foundation to further those educational opportunities for them. Here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Mr. Hudson?
Nick Hudson, 107 South 55th Street, Omaha. Director of Fashion Institute Midwest. As we've heard, we're very, very proud of all the young people. We have about 700 young people involved in Omaha Fashion Week. It's actually a part, part show, but also part trade show as well, in that a lot of these young entrepreneurs are building up their brands and their businesses. So we do appreciate the support of the city council and the, we wanted to ask for permission for music between 12:00 and 1:00 A.M., just to be very low-level, conversational level, just so that it helps people have some chance to mingle after the event and discuss their designs. We're very sensitive to the local residents, so we'll keep the volume to be just a conversational background level. Here to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nick Bartholomew, I'm the event coordinator, one of the event coordinators from Omaha Fashion Week, 5325 South 191st Avenue, here to answer any questions the council may have.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? See none, public hearings closed. Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I just wanted to, I would like to let my colleagues know that I'd be supportive of the 1:00, 1:00 time for music. We'll, we'll give it a shot this year. If we hear any complaints, we'll have to revisit it a little bit, but I'm willing to give you a shot at it this year and see how it goes. It sounds like a really marvelous event, and one I hope to at least attend, at least in some fashion, so we're looking forward to it, but I would be supportive of it. Motion approved.
And if you can get Mr. Gray to model at one of your events, I'll attend as well. It is a great event for Omaha, I appreciate it too.
My wife wouldn't allow it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved on a 6-1 vote. Item number 35, resolution that Big Red Kino is granted approval to operate a satellite at the Brassknocker DBA Dr. Jack's Drinkery, 3012 North 102nd Street. We have an amendment of the whole.
Item number 35 has its public hearing today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Kino. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I have with me Derek Wallen, the owner of the Brassknocker LLC, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
The amendment of the whole?
Amendment of the whole. Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Amendment of the whole is approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, any mayor of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they are removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 36 through 39 were held on July 30th.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero on the resolution. We're removing item number 50 from the consent agenda.
The public hearing, hearings on agenda items number 40 through 49 and 51 through 54 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Amendment of the whole is approved seven to zero. Now, item number 50, resolution that the bid from Blademaster Ground Maintenance to furnish all labor materials and equipment necessary for the Benson Public Parking Lot and Common Areas Maintenance is hereby approved.
Thank you. This item was on public hearing today, but in cooperation with the Benson Business Improvement District and the Law Department, we've agreed to lay this over for four weeks for continued public hearing as we continue to work out the details of their maintenance agreement to continue to keep Benson tidy and looking nice the way we want it, so I request that motion.
Motion approved for four weeks, continued public hearing.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Fifty-eight, or, I was late over four weeks. Can you give me number 85? I don't have my, oh, here it is, I got it. Mr. President, we can bring up item number 85, which is additional resolution. Resolution that city council hereby approves, and the mayor is authorized to execute the attached consent of assignment and amendment of restaurant lease between the city of Omaha and the Stores Riverfront Development Company to operate the former Rick's Cafe Boatyard Restaurant at 345 Riverfront Drive.
Public hearing on item number 85 is today. Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, 1819 Fordham. I want to talk just a little bit about the history of this particular place. Back in the late 90s, the city of Omaha entered into an agreement with the EPA and Arco to clean up the Arco lead smelting plant. Arco put in over $20 million to create Lewis and Clark Landing. As you know, the city then spent several hundred million dollars to create the rest of the Riverfront Development, along with the Noddo Development and Arena Convention Center. The first person to put a building down there was Rick Albrecht of Rick's Cafe, Rick's Boatyard Cafe. He had the vision and took the risk to build a $2.5 million restaurant before the Arena Convention Center was built, before anything else was built down there. He went through 10 years of a, of a restaurant, probably typical lifetime of a restaurant. He had several very good years, then, as we all note, it slowly got less popular. He closed on, at the end of 2012. Since then, Rick Albrecht and I have been talking to a number of people who had an interest in the facility, probably anywhere from 12 to 15 people. A lot had some interest, a lot had little interest. We kind of filtered through it all, and the group, it really came out to the top, is Tom Markle, who will speak here in a few minutes, along with Eve Menard, who's a local restaurateur, ran Charlie's on the Lake for, I think, about 17 years or so. So the lease that Rick had allows him to assign it to another entity. That's what he's, what he's done. The city of Omaha has the right to consent to it, and that's why we're here before the city council, and I urge that you approve the consent. Without, I'll introduce Tom.
Good afternoon. This is a funner group than I thought. Anyway, we're very, very, very proud.
Is that a compliment, or is that a?
We're very proud to be welcomed into Omaha. I was born here many years ago and have now come back, and to really rebuild this iconic property down in what would be the beachfront property of Omaha, and we're doing that with...
Can we have your name and address just for the...
Yes, I will. Tom, that's Tom Markle on 319 South 17th Street.
Thanks.
And we're, between the Stores and the Markles, who you know of, have many business interests here in the city. We have partnered up with what we believe is a great guide to serve food, and then to provide beer, which goes back to about 1863 here on 16th and Clark, and you can see the smokestack from the restaurant. So I invite you all down to have a taste of our new four beers, and enjoy some beachfront or riverfront properties with the Stores and the Markles. I'm here for any other questions.
Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? See none, public hearings closed.
With the assignment of the lease over, does the 50-year clock start over?
I should mention that. A couple changes is, yes, the 50-year timeframe does start over. The original one was 15, 50 years. Actually, ran that down to about 38 years left. We added another 12 years onto it. We've also, we are also waiving rent payments through July of 2014. All this in consideration for the tenant improvements. Mr. Markle and his group are going to put in $400,000 to $500,000 at least of tenant improvements. Again, this is a typical arrangement for any type of ground lease.
And the waiving of rent until 2014, does the 50-year clock start in 2014, or does it start in '13?
Starts with the approval of this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gurnett?
Mr. Gray? Pretty spiffy in that apron at the news media. Hope to get to see in action down there at the restaurant.
You would have to bring that up.
That's it, huh? Well, I would just add, too, it's, it's great to have the historical name back in a prominent place in Omaha, and we look forward to you doing well there and continuing to make the Riverfront thrive, so, welcome. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've heard no one say anything about drinking stores. You all look so innocent up here. Some of you, some of you may be...
No, I, no. Counselor Mr. Pauls, I confess the day I wore the apron.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?